This time, we'd like to call to order the September sixteenth, two thousand fourteen Yukon Oklahoma City Council Meeting. You would rise with me for the invocation by Pastor Tim Bear from Grace Church and our flag salute.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we give you thanks for this day, for our beautiful weather and our beautiful city and the wonderful people here in Yukon, Oklahoma. We ask that you be with us in this meeting tonight, that you bless this time together with your wisdom and your grace, and that we continue to move forward as a community into the direction you you call us into and to the future you have that you have dreamt for us. Please help us use all of our resources for the betterment and the empowerment of all of our citizens and to help us to, help us draw even closer together as a community and towards your vision for us. We pray these things in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Smith, here.
Here.
Alberts.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Yanda.
Here.
This is our portion for presentations and proclamations. I see that we have one. If I could get Sharon Hayes from the Fort Reno Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution to come forward, please. I'd like to read the proclamation. It says, "Whereas September seventeenth, two thousand fourteen marks the two hundred twenty-seventh anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the, by the, excuse me, Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to the magnificent document, its memorable anniversary and the patriotic celebrations which all will commemorate it, and whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of the proclamations each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I Ken Smith, by virtue of my authority in me as Mayor of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week, and we urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves, given under my hand the seal of the City of Yukon this sixteenth day of September, two thousand fourteen." Have you got a few words? Have you got a few words you'd like to share?
Fort Reno, Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution are dedicated to the historical preservation, education, and patriotism in their communities, and so we want to thank you for once again helping us celebrate the birthday of the U.S. Constitution.
Thank you. It is truly an honor.
It is.
This is our visitor section of our agenda, and I know that we have not, or I have not been presented a request to speak. Do we have anyone before the council that has forgotten to fill their form that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we will recess as the Yukon City Council and reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. Item one A is the YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of August nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, and B, payment of material claims in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, five hundred forty dollars and twenty-five cents. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
At this time, we'll adjourn as the YMA and reconvene as a Yukon City Council. Item one is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, B, payment of material claims in the amount of three hundred ninety-one thousand, six hundred sixty-one dollars and forty cents, C, designation, designating the items of the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade, D, renewal of the existing agreement for the services between the City of Yukon and Oklahoma Checks, Inc., for the term of July first, two thousand fourteen, through June thirty, two thousand fifteen, at a cost of one thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars, E, appointment of Nick Gerba to the Park Board representing Ward Two as recommended by Councilmember John Alberts, F, appointment of Dr. Athena Freese to the Board of the Spanish Cove Housing Authority for the remaining term of Office Two, expiring May thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, as recommended by the Nominating Committee, and G, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for October seventh, two thousand fourteen, seven P.M. in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, twelve South Fifth Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I have an error on item A. That needs to be September second and not August nineteenth of two thousand fourteen.
All right, then I would entertain a motion to separate item A from-
Actually, you don't have to separate it if they'll just make a motion to, with that as the correct date in there.
All right. I would entertain a motion, then, that would approve the item one with that change of August nineteenth to August second, two thousand fourteen, on item A. September second?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be tough to do August second, wouldn't it? I would entertain such a motion.
Whoever made the motion, don't they need to amend it?
Yes.
Nobody's made a motion yet. I don't have a motion.
So moved with it. Stated amendment.
Second.
All right, do we have any discussion? Having no discussion, call the roll, please.
Russell.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. Excuse me. Item two is reports of boards, commissions, and city officials.
None this evening, Mayor.
None this evening. We'll move on to item three. Consider approving an expenditure of funds in the amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars for a Roundhouse Trackless Train from the Roundhouse Trackless Train Company to be paid from the master lease purchase as requested by Parks and Recreation Director. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
Just that old ship is going to go away. Is that it, or?
It's going to be put into a secondary role.
Secondary role. Okay. Well, there were some, some mention there of not having parts availability and that sort of thing as well.
As long as it will go, we will run it.
We will run it. Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any further discussion? Having none, call the roll, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Item four is to consider accepting the two thousand fourteen Community Development Block Grant from the Oklahoma Department of Commerce in the amount of sixty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
It just, we had two bids that were quite a bit under what the architect, and I guess I'd like for the city to just comment on that. It's just the, the economy is bad enough that we're getting better pricing now, or just?
I think that's the next item.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that the, oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Do we have any further discussion? Having none, call the roll, please.
Yanda.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Item five is to consider awarding the contract for the Yukon Community Center Roof Replacement Project to Universal Roofing and Sheet Metal Incorporated in the amount of two hundred seven thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars to be paid from capital improvement funds as recommended by Triad Design Group.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
Okay, Robert.
I already knew the question. Sometimes we're a little high in our estimates. We try to be conservative.
Well, I guess my question was that really went into it. I noticed there, on the second part of the bid process that was in there, there were additional work-
Right.
-anticipated. Was that considered a part of your bid or your thought process?
No, what you're doing tonight is you're awarding the contract for the two hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. Those other two items established a unit price after we removed the roof. Then we will do further inspection, and so we, we have established those items to pay if we need to, I believe it's to remove the installation-
Okay, was that part of the anticipation process, though?
In the metal roof.
Yeah, well, I mean, was that part of the anticipation that you thought it, there might be additional things beyond that? Or, or that was just what the, the original look at it?
No, our, our estimate in that tabulation is what we thought just the roof would be.
Okay. Thank you.
I might add that it, to me, is very good news that-
Yeah.
-any subsequent work that we might find after the existing roof is off, that we have a significant cushion between what was budgeted for this project and what this project will actually cost.
That's correct, and we would, after we remove the roof and we can measure these items, we would have to come back, we'll come back to you to amend their contract if needed.
Do we have any further discussion?
I think I asked this the last time, but in this work, if we expand or change, I mean, we'll just be able to tie into this and go on.
Tie into this and go on.
Okay.
The way, the way it was designed.
Do we have any further discussion? Having none, call the roll, please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Item six is to consider accepting the maintenance bonds for the public water line and sanitary sewer for the improvements for Garth Brooks Phase Four, as recommended by the Development Services Director. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, call the roll, please.
Russell.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Item seven is to consider accepting a request to re-lease the letter of credit for the improvements from Public Water Line and Sanitary Sewer for Garth Brooks Phase Four in the amount of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, as recommended by the Development Services Director. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second. Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, are we just, is, are we at the end of this? That's it, and we're releasing the letter now?
For this particular part of the development, we are at the end.
We are at the end, and so it's completed, so we're releasing the letter of credit.
Because we, in the previous item, put into place their maintenance bond.
Oh, okay.
Do we have any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Item eight is to consider approving the special conditions to the revocable permit application for Unite Private Networks regarding the installation of broadband fiber to serve the Yukon Public School District, to include, Unite Private Networks will be responsible for the relocation of the fiber optic cable for the widening of Highway Four, Piedmont Road, and will be required to bear all cost for that, really, cost of that relocation. Thus, city and state shall bear no expense for this relocation. Unite Private Networks shall provide a statement from the contractor and OGN E that fiber optic aerial cable has been installed in accordance with standards and codes for the installation and clearances over roadways. Unite Private Networks contractor will be required to work with the City of Yukon on the installation. A City of Yukon representative will be assigned to work with the contractor on the installation of the fiber optic cable. All cable coils, as listed in the plans for the installation of the fiber optic cable, will be required to be reviewed and approved for this installation by the City of Yukon's representative as recommended by the Development Services Director. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, is this all above ground? Or, when I was reading through all of the material, I was having a rough time getting through.
I will call on Mitch to help me, but there is a lot of it that is above ground. There are, however, certain areas, in fact, several instances where the road will have to be bored. And Mitch, if you will carry on.
Yes, where available poles will be used for the cable installation, and they're OGN E poles. They have a agreement, UPN Networks have an agreement with OGN E to use their poles for service. There is several locations, eleven, that they will have to bore, as well as you'll approve later in this. So-
Well, I saw that.
So there's some cable burial, but not a whole lot. The river, Eleventh Street Bridge, is going to be quite a bit of cable bearing there because of the river, so they'll have to get underneath it. A lot of others will be underneath the railroad, underneath sixty-six a couple of times, and various other locations.
I noticed there was, a lot of this is actually attached to Oklahoma City as well, is it not?
It actually serves all the schools. The main hub is the main building. That is the hub. That's where everything's going to run to.
But the right-of-way for this actually impacts poles that are in Oklahoma City that are not our-
That is correct. All the schools that belong to the Yukon Public School System are connected back to the main school building.
Okay, so that's not a problem to us, then?
No, they're actually working through Oklahoma City as well, getting their, their revocable permits signed as well.
So that's all been taken care of already?
They're working on that as well.
So it's not finished yet in that part, or just we're doing our-
We're doing our part, and they'd have to get their permit through Oklahoma City because it's one of the things they're required to do.
Okay, who will be getting that? Is that the UPN?
UPN Networks will be required to do that, as well as get any permission they need for the sixty-six highway boring because it's a state highway or federal highway.
Mr. Horton, if I, could I reread part of this that might clear this up for Councilman McCarron? Unite Private Networks will be responsible for the relocation of the fiber optic cable for the widening of Highway Four, Piedmont Road, and will be required to bear all costs for the relocation. Thus, city and state shall bear no expense for this relocation.
Well, yeah, there was no question about whether we're going to bear the expense, but I assume that they're coming to us. There's a reason that we're going through all of this.
Yes, anything, anytime they bore a city street, they're required to get what we call a-
A permit.
A permit. It's a right-of-entry to work in the right-of-way, basically. As well as they're connecting multiple schools together, and they don't have an agreement with us, so we're doing a revocable permit. It does give them permission to install that cable with the following suggested amendments to that revocable permit, is what we're requesting.
I could also point out, Mitch, that our right-of-ways, our easements, are getting full of utilities of all kinds, particularly lines, electronic lines. So we're going to have to start thinking about our right-of-way as a three-dimensional thought process, rather than just how wide they are. We're going to have to start thinking about how deep they are as well.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mitchell.
Do we have any further discussions or questions for Mr. Horton?
I do, and I, I'm sorry to belabor the point, but I mean, I've never seen anything quite like this while I've been sitting here over the years. I mean, is it, is this because the, how congested, I guess, the easements are getting, I mean, why this type of agreement?
We actually did this with Spanish Cove, if you remember right, several years ago, when we connected the cottages to the main campus. It is something so we know where the cable is. We know where it's buried. We have a tracking device. Hopefully, they'll be part of the nine, not the nine-one-one, the Oki Dig, what it used to be called. We're trying to get that information where we know where it's at, so we don't dig into it when we're repairing water lines or sewer lines, as well, it's not on top of our water and sewer lines. That's one of the reasons we're going to put a city representative with this contractor to make sure that we don't have a cable right on top of a water line.
And is that on a daily basis?
Yes, we'll have somebody with them almost twenty-
I underlined that. I thought that that was-
Yes.
Okay. And I was just curious. I mean, I knew there was some benefit to the city, but that's why, just because the easements are getting so congested that, so we'll see this type of detail for this type of project in the future?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, just being nosy. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mitch.
All right.
Great job.
Oh, yes, and I would just like to reiterate that. I think our Development Services Department, for the protection they provided the city within this, is substantial, and I appreciate the, the effort that went into it. Do we have any further discussion?
Having none, call the roll, please.
Alberts.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Item nine is to consider approving the building permit application, applications to construct within road right-of-way and specially, specially-conditioned revocable permit application, and authorize the city manager to approve such applications from Unite Private Networks for installation of broadband fiber to serve Yukon Public School District, as recommended by the Development Services Director.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
I guess I, I'll ask for comments again, Mr. Horton, since you-
Yes. Mr. McCarron, what can I do?
Well, I'm just saying, this is just part of that same thing, right, where we're this specially-conditioned revocable permit application.
That's correct. We're amending the application with what you did just a while ago.
Right. And so explain to me, I guess, exactly what the specially-conditioned revocable permit means to me.
In item eight, we approve those special conditions to be added to that revocable permit. So those items are being added to that revocable permit.
All right, so then merely the conditions from the previous item?
That is correct.
Is that what we're saying? Okay. That's fine with me, then. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Do we have any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Russell.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Item ten is to consider approving ordinance number thirteen oh one and ordinance amending the Employee Retirement System Defined Benefit Plan of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, to incorporate the definition of spouse, providing for effective date, providing for repealer and severability, and declaring an emergency. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
And a second? I will second.
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
I guess I would request, Grayson, that, why do we need this, I guess, for our defined benefit plan?
To keep our plan federally recognized as a qualified plan for all our retirees. It, we are covered under two sets of laws. And the laws that we are talking about this evening are the federal laws, rather than state laws. And we are simply trying to keep our plan qualified under the current IRS rules for all our retirees.
So can you comment on what the negative part of that is, or what would be the penalty?
I can't think of a negative to the plan. The positive is that all our current retirees, plus all of our future retirees, will have a tax-qualified plan.
So it could, it could result in, in the disqualification of the current plan?
A negative vote could qualify, could result in a disqualification of our plan for our retirees.
Okay. Thank you.
But this item doesn't change the plan at all. It just brings it in compliance with the federal, federal law.
That's correct. Absolutely.
This is an administrative matter.
That's it.
Do we have any further discussion? Having none, call the roll, please.
Yanda.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Russell.
No.
Item eleven is to consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance number thirteen oh one. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Do we have any further discussion on this? Any discussion on the emergency? Call the roll, please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Russell.
No.
Alberts.
Yes.
Item twelve is city managers' report. These are information items only.
I would like to report on sales tax first. We have, once again, disappointing news. Our sales tax was decreased by just over a half a point for the reporting period, and brings our year-to-date report on sales tax down to just over seven, or point seven percent. There are numerous reasons why we believe this occurred, but the fact of the matter is that we've still got to make our number, and we are preparing contingency plans as we speak to make sure that we do. However, if you will look at our five-year weighted average, you will see that we make a really strong rebound, beginning in the next monthly reporting period. So we do not want to be overly aggressive in any adjustments that we make. But at the same time, we do not want to get down to April of next year and have to make significant changes to our budget over a three-month period. So we will be watching that quite a lot. Check Day is coming up, the fourth of October. We encourage everybody to come down. You know, it's been my experience, and limited experience here, that we either have great weather or we have really bad weather for Check Day. I am anticipating, hopefully, that we have great weather again this year. It's a great event, and we encourage everybody to come out and enjoy Check Day. You have to get out early to enjoy the freshest, best kolaches in town, and they're all over everywhere. Main Street Revitalization, I'd like to put on, well, we'll go ahead with Main Street. We have been moving forward. Tammy has headed that up a lot. We have several projects in the making for that. But we are, as a city, and the council has approved, to this point, many expenditures for the revitalization of our Main Street. Tammy is our lead for that particular project, and Tammy, if you would, bring us up to date on a few of the project particulars.
Okay, the first thing, on behalf of Pam Shelton, she's our Main Street Director. She is working diligently with all of the businesses on Main Street to try to promote Main Street and, and help with our revitalization. Tomorrow evening at four o'clock, she has staged the Cash Mob, Main Street Mob. They will, so far, we have fifty-five participants that said they are going to be joining us at the Economic Development Office at four o'clock. From there, they will go to one of the Main Street businesses, and each participant has been requested to spend at least twenty dollars in one store. Like I said, we have fifty-five participants that said they will be there, and thirty-three that have said maybe. So it's going to be a great turnout. We welcome anyone that wants to participate in that. They'll have a social hour afterwards at Red, at Green Chili Kitchen on Main Street. So we're doing everything we can to try to promote Main Street and build up the enthusiasm and, and so that we can revitalize everything on, down Main Street. As we stated in the study session at the beginning of this month, there are several projects that we have lined up and that you all had approved on our budget for this fiscal year. There's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was budgeted for capital improvements. Some of those will be done through welcome signs, the road signs that are on each entrance into town. Some of them will be the brick- of them will be the brick planter signs that are done. There's one at Third and Main Street. There's one out west of Garth Brooks along Main Street. And there will be another one added on the eastern city limits on Main Street, just east of Yukon Parkway. We will also be putting in new roadway lighting. We're going to be doing this in three phases. The first phase will start at the eastern city limits and it will go to Third Street on Main Street. The second phase will start at Richland Road and go to Seventh Street. And then our third phase will be from Third Street to Seventh Street. These will be new LED lights. They will be black decorative poles. Some of them will be double poles, some will be single poles. And towards down, the downtown area, they will be shorter poles with maybe numerous globes on them, but they will all be decorative lights. So we're really trying to move forward with this revitalization project and and hope to to gain some support through that and and get the businesses to also buy into the project that we're doing. We, the Yukon Community Support Foundation has also, they're going to be doing grants for some of the businesses on Main Street by providing money for for businesses to paint their businesses. So we've got a lot of enthusiasm from that. The business owners are really excited about those grants that we're providing and everyone's really excited about the project.
Thank you, Tammy. Tammy does such a great job in leading any effort that she is involved in and we appreciate her so much. The last part of my report is, it has occurred to me that it needs to be recognized publicly that each month, each month, in two meetings, two council packets, monthly reports by staff to council, that they are asked to read a book about the size of War and Peace every month. It is an incredible amount of information. It is provided to the public through our websites. We actually publish our check register online. And I think the commitment of this council to stay up to date on what's going on in the city by reviewing a book, The Size of War and Peace, every month should be acknowledged and appreciated. It is a lot of work. It's a lot of effort to stay up on all that stuff. And I appreciate it, ladies and gentlemen. I truly do. Thank you, Mayor. With that, I'll end my report and stand ready for your questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for our city manager from the council?
I have one. I don't mean to be a doom and gloom, but my, remind me, our budget was based upon what percent growth?
Sales tax growth was based on a four percent growth.
Okay. And we're at oh-seven right now?
That's right.
Okay. Just leave that number in my head. Thank you.
And we're, so are we, so are we.
He's, I've, you got one question too, whenever John finishes.
I'm done.
I just, Grayson, I know last month we said we're going to open the roads about September the first. Is DOT giving us any new numbers on the?
After the report that I gave last, last meeting, we are within a couple of weeks of opening Garth Brooks underneath the interstate. Plus, we are somewhere around three weeks out on opening all of the lanes of I forty. That does not include the Mustang Road bridges over I forty, which, who knows what that's going to be, but it is. I might point out one thing I forgot. Doug texted me a announcement from a particular eatery and then Mitch told me this, this evening that he has received the plans with an application, which is the official announcement that McAllister's Deli will be locating on the north end of the Kirkland's Building. So we can be looking forward to that over the next several months. A new McAllister's.
Do we have any additional questions for our city manager?
No, I think, because I think our sales tax problems will heal up a little bit whenever we get all those roads moved back, back into functioning reasons. So, thank you.
Item thirteen is new business. No, new business. Item fourteen is council discussion. Mr. McCarron?
Well, I certainly do enjoy being in Yukon. I want to thank Dr. Athena Fries for volunteering to serve on the Spanish Cove Board. I think she'll be a good addition for them. I also want to thank Pam and Tammy for all of their work. There's been a lot going on and for us to not only be putting in all of the new things that we're putting down on I forty, but to really looking at revitalizing our Main Street is, is pretty important. And I'm sure looking forward to the next, at least the next two years for me. So, that's it, Mayor.
Councilman Russell?
Well, I just want to say I'm real excited about the Main Street renovation. Something we've needed for a long time and I think the streetlights and stoplights, everything that you've got planned for there will really make a change for the city. I'm real excited about it. That's all.
Thank you. Councilwoman Yonda?
I just want to say thank you to Mitch for the excellent job that you and your staff provide to the city and for our safety and looking out for, you know, all the aspects that the city encounters in now and in the years to come. And then I want to congratulate Dr. Fries on her appointment to the Spanish Cove Board and Nick on his appointment to the park board. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Alberts?
I just thank Nick for volunteering to continue to help and support the city and look forward to him serving on the park board. I have my niece here, Chelsea Alberts, with a bunch of other kids. I'd call you all out by name, too, that are here for, from Mr. Andrews' class. And I'm always happy to see that they come and and are part of, at least have some interest. I know that you're probably ordered to be here, required to be here, but this is your government at work. So welcome, welcome tonight and thank you for coming and participating. And I say thanks to all the city employees. I mean, we do read through a mound of garbage sometimes, it seems like, but it's really important and it's important to us and it's important to you all. But the people behind the scene, Grayson and all the staff, I mean, they read through twice what we read through, so they help narrow it down. And and I don't name the individuals, but thank you very much for all the hard work that you do. I mean, it's a great place and I wouldn't be alarmed by the, the tax number. I think that, like Mike says, I think it'll make a rebound. I think over Christmas that we'll go forward and I think that we'll be fine. And I know that Grayson says he doesn't stress that, but I'm sure he's looking at the number and making sure that we're able to, to handle any kind of a budget issue. So I look forward to a great Christmas in Yukon and the chamber promoting that and a lot of growth. And thank you to the people that worked so hard to make it all possible.
All right. Well, I'd begin by thanking our city manager for recognizing the efforts that are, your council members put into each of their meetings. And I would like to encourage our, my fellow councilmen to, and women, to be sure to continue to be prepared as these meetings go on. And I'd like to also recognize Pam Sheldon with our, Shelton with our Main Street. You know, the Cash Mob tomorrow is going to be important to one lucky business downtown and this is going to be a continued effort on her part. You know, Pam Shelton should be a name that you recognize from previous efforts as far as raising funds and improving our community. And I would say that we are lucky in Yukon to have a citizen like Pam that is willing to put forth the effort it takes to organize our community. And, you know, I strategically reversed those words from a community organizer because if I said it that way, I would have to also add that she may make a good presidential candidate. That being said, I hope you have a wonderful evening. This meeting is adjourned.